Come they follow, we thank you that we're able here to gather, Lord. Especially for the first meeting in 2024, Lord. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us during 2023, Lord. That there was money, food and safety, Lord. I pray for all those that suffered loss during 2023, Lord. I pray that you comfort them with best God, as you know, Father, Lord. I pray for continued safety and blessing for this coming year, Lord. And help us make your decisions for you tonight. Your name is great.
Scott, you want to reach for the blades, please? All you got to do is start. We'll get them.
States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call me to order. All right, we got praise and recognition. I want to start off with a proclamation in the memory of Darrell R. Brightwell. Let me read this, please. Whereas the city of St. Albans is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas St. Albans, West Virginia is a community which encourages its citizens as their contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas Darrell R. Brightwell spent countless hours volunteering for various charity work, civic organizations, and always willing to help the city of St. Albans. And whereas Darrell's dedicated service to this community deserves the special recognition of having his memory honored. And now therefore, I Scott James, Mayor of the great city of St. Albans, do hereby proclaim January 2nd, 2024 to be Darrell R. Brightwell Day in the city of St. Albans and express our deep appreciation for his dedication to the progress of this community and extend to his family our sincere sympathy upon his passing. Done this 2nd day of January in the year of our Lord, 2024. Now Darrell's wife for many, many years, we told her she had to give a speech and she's like, ain't no way. But I want to present this to you and the family. And you know, I've known Darrell for many, many years and what he has done. He was truly a St. Albans guy through and through. And he will be deeply missed, all right? And but you've got family around you, all right? That's going to be there to support you and carry you. And we just want to thank you and Darrell for everything they've done for the city of St. Albans, okay? Thank you. All right, another proclamations, and I'm not going to read it through and through, but it's already been given. We do this every year. It's a Community Risk Reduction Week proclamation. Aye, and now therefore, I Scott James, Mayor of the great city of St. Albans, do hereby proclaim the week of January 15th through the 21st, 2024 to be Community Risk Reduction Week. In the city of St. Albans, a grassroots initiative of fire service professionals across the nation, including the St. Albans Fire Department, to raise awareness of the importance of community risk reduction in the fire service community and an opportunity to make communities safer. And we've already given the proclamation to Chief. I don't know where he's at tonight, so. Oh, there he is.
He's in jail back here.
In jail. All right, now I get to give out some money.
All right.
All right. Our Christmas decorating contest winners. And we're going to start off with the Christmas trees at the bank. They did a wonderful job again this year. And I don't know exact numbers of what was contributed to Christ Kitchen and the food pantry down there, but it's always a big boost to them, all right? Fourth place, nine cans, $75 prize, WWSA Radio. Hello, Patty.
Hi there, how are you?
Good. Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Thank you very much. All right.
Congratulations.
Third place. VFW Auxiliary 6418, 75 cans, $100 prize. Hey, now let me get in the middle here, ladies. I'll be like a rose between two golds. Thank you all so much. Second place, West Virginia Statewide Independent Living Council, 93 cans, $125 prize. Can we have anybody here? Congratulations. Patty, Patty's got to get one. Congratulations. Thank you. First place, 690 cans, $200 first prize, St. Albans Women of the Moose. Hey, hey guys, I want to thank you. The prize money for this contest was provided by St. Albans Chamber of Commerce. Come on up, ladies. Oh, there you are, folks. Wait a minute, I don't recognize you without a margarita in your hand.
How'd they got me here? Told me you just saw a margarita.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, we wanted to thank Kroger in St. Albans because they helped us and we had a lot of support and we couldn't deny it.
Great community, great community.
Thanks Patty for really doing it.
All right, next we'll do the business winners, all right? The business winners and residential winners. The winning money comes from the city, all right? Third place in the business winners, and it was very competitive this year. We had some beautiful things. And guys, you got to understand, this is a, the judges are subjective. What might be beautiful to me might not be beautiful to her, okay? So it's subjective and we've had some issues. With people calling, one guy even called and told the chamber, they were going to do the Freedom of Information Act to get the judges' names. You know, we just try to enhance the Christmas season, all right? And bring the community up and so, but I appreciate everybody that does participate. All right, third place, $100. Recently opened, the shop on Sixth Avenue. I guess I'll have to mail this one. All right, second place, and I pass it every day on the way to work. All right, $200, The Doghouse. And first place, and I'm telling you what, they worked hard at it, all right? And they deserved it this year. They did a wonderful job, $300, Little Ben Heaven Cupcake. Somebody said Dan was the orchestra. I don't know.
Me and Danny Wilson and Rihanna and I just did a snowman.
The trees were done by Rihanna.
Absolutely. She was beautiful.
Okay, ready? Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. All right, now we'll get to the residential winners. Ward one, 914 Seventh Avenue, $100, Christopher Finley. We'll mail that one. All right, Ward two, 55 10th Avenue, Hank Babcock. All right, so thank you, great. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you for what you do. Ward three, I don't know about this guy, but you know, his wife's pretty solid, all right? But 309 Parkview Drive, Lisa and Brett Parry. We'll give Lisa the check, okay? Congratulations, guys. Thank you all. Ward four, 125 Walnut Street, Alicia Pauli. Congratulations. I see you every morning when I go to work, you're getting into your truck.
I have to say, it's us ever.
Yeah.
Yes. Since the day you died, hilarious.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Ward five, I believe this person's been a winner before. 508 Avenue Street, Oscar Lawson. I delivered it to their house the last time they won, so I'll probably do that again. All right, Ward six, 875 Observatory Drive, Brian and Lisa Farrell. Another male. Yeah. Ward seven, 2636 Morel Avenue, Leo and Tracy Moss. Now, the paper says Leo and Tracy, but the checks just made out to Tracy. Congratulations, thank you all. Wait, say guys, saying Paul's good to you? All right, Ward eight, 2405 Wilson Avenue. I believe that was our gingerbread people also. All right, Ashley Owens. Hey, I'm going to tell you what, I went by a couple times. The nights I went by, they weren't there. I wanted my picture with them, but my grandbabies just love it. And that adds so much to our community when people do things like that. So thank you all very much. It was awesome. Thank you.
Now you know what we expect again next year.
All right, Ward nine, 1010 Cent Hill Drive, Kimberly and Jamie Henson. And last but not least, the 25177, a second time winner, I believe. All right. Cindy Trout and her husband Jeff, but the check says Cindy. Jeff, Jeff and I graduated together and he said she does all the work.
I can't say that, but she does.
Cindy doesn't like to make community speeches, but she was, she told me when she came out here, she would really prefer to donate this money to the people to protect us here in this city. And that's because of the police department, you're saying? We'll do that. All right, thank you all very much. All right, that concludes the Christmas decorating contest winners. And guys, you know, I'm a little partial, all right? But I grew up here and things like this just makes our community a great community. So thank you all to each and every one of you that participated. And we hope to have more next year. And so thank you all again. Hey, Chief, keep all the bright windows lit. Oh, Lori, thanks, Sonny, how are you? I haven't seen you. All right, you too, son. Later we'll see you. Jane, hey later, keep Jane out of that.
Hello, Chief.
Jane, how are you? All right. My approval minutes, City Council, December 18th, 2023. Oh, wait a minute, we got more praise and recognition.
Yes, two things. First off, the Random Acts of Kindness, the 25177 Foundation, earlier in December. I think over a three day period, they gave out over $2,000 worth of gift cards. For especially coming at Christmas time and climate that, you know, everybody's pockets are a little bit tight sometimes. That was a huge help to the community and people who were in the community. So that was awesome. 25177 and the St. Albans Police Department, both working together to put that out there as a community. So big thanks to both those organizations. And then, you know, Parks, we'll have a Parks report in a few moments, but just thanks to Parks for praise and recognizing, you know, those guys, we all get, and gals as well, we all get to sit at home in the nice fireplace in the cold, or in the winter nights, good Christmas. And those people are out there every night, you know, rain, snow, cold, nice weather. They're always out there, they're always up there on the hill. So appreciate to, and over at roadside this year. And also to any and all volunteers who, you know, yeah, the Parks staff do a lot of overtime, or not, a lot of extra in that time. But they couldn't do it without volunteers. So the community really steps up and helps out a lot there. So thanks to any and all volunteers who participated with anything to do in Christmas season.
Thank you very much. One thing I do want to say is 99.9% of the feedback that I have received on the Santa House over roadside has been positive. There's always a few haters out there that's going to, yeah. Complain. Yeah, haters are going to hate. That's a good point. But that really and truthfully made a huge difference on the traffic and the congestion, not only in the park, but even as you were exiting the park and going down through Highland Drive and everything else. So wonderful job, Kevin, and your crew on that Santa House. It was awesome, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd also like to thank all the businesses and individuals that fed us this year. We need to get on Weight Watchers now because I think we all gained about 20 pounds. And some of you guys in this room fed us too, so thank you guys very much.
That's what makes St. Albans a miss community in West Virginia, man. Everybody steps up and helps out. Any other praise and recognition? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to echo what Dave said. Those were all, there were tons of great examples of kindness and just genuine good community spirit. But there were a lot that didn't get as much spotlight time or just weren't as mentioned. And one of the big ones, and I'm sorry they already left, the Women of the Moose did a very nice Christmas party. They had a Christmas party for children, underprivileged children. They had 47 kids come over.
Wow.
And I know that Public Works donated a bunch of candy to that and Little Caesar's donated some pizzas. And they had just a really good turnout for that. It was a big, big event. And there were other events like that around the city that I feel like, I wish we could know all of them and just turn them out. But it really felt like a great community this Christmas season. And I think thanks to the police department.
Shop with the cop.
All the things they were doing the week prior to Christmas with the 25177 Foundation, working extra shifts for basketball games and the lights and everything else. They also had two pretty extraordinary events, a person we'll hear about later, but it was, I mean, just amidst all that fun that was happening, there were still bad guys to be taken down. And they did a very, it was just a great example of quiet professionalism on their part. And I just, I really want to give them heartfelt thanks for that.
Wait, 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 let me tell you something. They took some bad guys down. I can't get any specifics yet because Chief hadn't told me I can. But, or told me I can, but two big busts in conjunction with county and feds is going to put a big dent in drug trafficking in this area. I promise you that. So thank you all very much, Chief. All right. I didn't mention any names or addresses.
General, you're exactly right because during that day, we were doing the 25177 Foundation Random Acts of Kindness and we're looking to randomly pull folks over for safety checks that have children in the vehicles, families. At the same time, this was investigation was coming to an end and some major arrests were getting ready to happen. While I was riding around with the chief trying to look for families, he goes, you better strap in, we got a car, we might take you with me. Holy cow, dude. I feel like the Dukes of Hazzard.
He was on the official PD log sheet, not intending to traffic stop. One of the targets in the investigation.
You know, guys, that's why.
And here I was in the court.
No, that's why when you Google safest cities in West Virginia, top 10 safest cities, I updated 2023, St. Albans is on that list. And a lot of it has to do with the police department and what we're getting across to folks in this area. You want to be a bad guy, stay out now. You're never going to rid a community of all crime, all right? But I'm telling you, I can show you right here. Top 10 safest cities, you Google it and you go down, it says updated 2023 and St. Albans is the first town listed. So thank you all very much, Chief.
Thank you too.
All right, so. Any other praise and recognition? All right, approval minutes, City Council, December 18th, 2023. All right, we got any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. All right, Attorney Rusty Webb was going to be here to address counsel regarding the opioid settlement, but he got tied up. He cannot be here tonight, but we received a check, all right? And that's, I mean, that's what's coming our way, but there's more money to be had. $329,500, all right, from the opioid settlement. Now, before everybody starts elevating, there is strict guidelines on what this money can be used for. And I'm in discussion with Chief and Chief and some other people trying to come up with something, all right? And so, but what we have to do here tonight is action will be required to open a new bank account for the opioid settlement fund.
I'll make a motion.
All right, questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. If anybody wants a list of what it can be used for, let me know and I'll send it to you. I got a little email and I mean, it is, it's a lot stricter than the ARPA money. I'm going to tell you that right now.
Well, it all must be approved by this body right here.
Yeah.
We all take responsibility for where those funds are spent and that they adhere to the regulations of where it should be spent. Each one of us.
I would suggest the mayor send all of that.
Yeah, I would do that. It's lengthy reading, but you know, it is what it is. All right. New business, none suggested ordinance issues, none. Ordinance is first reading, ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the city code.
Sub move.
Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ordinance is second reading, ordinance to rezone 907 Sixth Avenue from C1 General Commercial to R2 Residential.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Recognize the homeowners.
Yeah, and the homeowners closing this Saturday.
Friday.
Friday. Friday, congratulations.
What's your buddy's name down there on the floor?
Murdock.
Murdock, very good, welcome to St. Albans.
Now, the one on the right in, in the glass, she's been here for a long time.
I'm a native.
Yeah.
Nick is from North Carolina, so he's learning where it is.
Tar Heels.
Yeah.
I have Blue Devils. Nine o'clock.
All right, finance committees.
That's how near he is to the city.
Well, welcome, it's, it's a great community, it's not perfect, none are, but welcome, it's a good place, man. Uh, finance committee report recommendations, uh, Councilman Roberts.
Hey, Mayor, you think I can get through this one?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I move to approve the payment of current invoice as an amount of nineteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'd like to make a motion since he's already voted.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Letters and reports, Councilman Rucker.
Uh, just on the festival lights, so our total number of cars for the year was eleven thousand nine hundred ninety cars. Um, that is just slightly off from last year, under a hundred off from last year, but we do add almost five thousand, four thousand seven hundred sixty-five people going to the Santa House, so. We're, we're short ninety-three cars, but we add almost five thousand heads walking through the Santa House, so. Um, and, and I do believe that there were instances where people would have gone there instead of coming to the lights for a night. So, uh, very good year, very successful year. Now, next year, we, we do expect our numbers to, to back off because we do lose a large amount of days. Our, our, we start back at our short schedule next year, so we'll be down in the twenties, uh, mid twenties on our days.
Twenty.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
So, we got twenty-three days next year. So, it, it's quite a hit to us, but we'll still do it great like we always do with the lights. Um, again, great year for it. Um, as Parks does, we're moving right out of Christmas and going into New Year. Um, Friday, January twelfth, at the Hansford Center from seven to eight-thirty, there will be a kickoff twenty twenty-four Community Night for grades K through third grade. Uh, music, games, face paint, arts and crafts, pizza and hot dogs, um, and refreshments. So, that'll be again Friday, the twelfth, at the Hansford Center at seven o'clock. Um, and then we'll get back later in the month with more events we have coming for the New Year.
Yeah, it slows down just a little bit, January, February.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Then it picks out, I mean, it's cold, can't do that.
You gotta recharge your batteries sometime.
But, huh, yeah. Um, any other letters or reports?
Uh, just with regards to Public Works, uh, there will, will be an extra big up on Friday because of the holiday.
Yep.
And, uh, I'd like to thank the forgetting.
They do a great job, man, and, and we've got four trucks now. And, and they have worked extremely hard to get this done. One thing I do want to say, if anybody asks you about Christmas trees, they can put it out with their trash. Or they can put it out tomorrow if their trash is Friday, all right? And, but call Public Works, let them know, and the chipper will come up and they'll, they'll brand it up, so. All right, and I saw them today, they were up, going up and down the streets, taking down all the Christmas decorations and everything else. Those guys do a great job.
We thought about sending those out to River Lake to put in the lake, to the place where they're putting all the trees in the county.
That would have to, you'd have to get, uh, a, a, approval from the River Lake.
Association.
Association, but I, I know they have done in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing also, I, I saw on the news that, uh, if Public Works wanted to get rid of them, they can, instead of doing the chipping, they can take them up to the farmer's market.
Yeah.
And they'll be taken in and put up there.
Okay.
Put them in that red mayor's truck and let him take them.
Hey, red mayor's truck.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Hey, hey, that's for them Red Dragons, baby.
I'm motion.
For them Red Dragons.
Very good, man.
All right, thank you, Walter, go probably. Any other letters or reports? All right, there's no appointments, announcements. Public Works Committee, Wednesday, January third, at eight AM at the City Garage. Parks Committee, Thursday, January fourth, at six PM at the Hansford Center. Martin Luther King Junior Day Holiday, Monday, January fifteenth, city and MUC offices will be closed. City Council, Tuesday, January sixteenth, at six-thirty PM in the council chambers. City election candidate filing period, Monday through Friday, January eighth through twenty-sixth, between the hours of eight AM and four-thirty PM, and Saturday, January twenty-seventh, nine AM to noon, at the city clerk's office, filing fee for mayor is a hundred and fifty dollars and city council is twenty-five. The term of office will be July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Yes, sir?
Uh, I believe, Mayor, there'll be a finance committee meeting on the eighth at four-thirty, if it's not long of you.
All right, well, I got an rubian.
Okay.
All right, yeah. Uh, finance meeting next Monday, January eighth, in con, in, uh, the City Hall Conference Room, it begins at four-thirty. Any other announcements? Nope. Now it's time for public forum, any resident wishing to address council, may step up to the podium, give your name, your address. You will be limited to five minutes to speak your piece. By the way, Summers, have those girls been behaving themselves or did they get a lump of coal for Christmas?
Nah, they behaved.
All right, that's good. Herman, you don't have anything to say? Yeah.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the American Legion, American Legion Auxiliary, back at the DFW and the DFW Auxiliary. Of course, we're all in the same building, Alphonsus Lane Avenue, and we are in the process of, uh, renovating our building. And with the help of a old hall, we have completed the painting and the restoration on the outside of the building. We have applied for a grant to, um, possibly make the building a historic building. And we are in the process of, um, raising about seventy-five thousand dollars. To do the in, finish the inside, we need new appliances, new bathroom fixtures, new flooring, several things, al- also painting. And, um, we have applied for that grant. Uh, in January, our building committee will be needing, and we're going to kick off our fundraising from seventy-five thousand dollars. So, you will be seeing us out, maybe holding out our hand, holding, don't, your handed out pobbies. Hard to tell what you're gonna see us doing, trying to raise money to come up with the money to finish this. We also are gonna have to put a new roof on the building and it is slate. And the cost, proximate cost of that, in addition to the seventy-five thousand that we need, is another fifty-five thousand dollars. So, we're working very hard to get that taken care of. And, um, one of the things that we do every, per Saturday of every month, we have a pancake breakfast, so please come out and support. That, uh, is American Legion function.
It is good.
It is, it is very good. And, um, I own the American Legion Auxiliary and the DFW Auxiliary. And, uh, it is a great organization, and if you'd like to give to your community and you have any kind of veteran connection, you have parents that serve, grandparents that serve, a spouse that serve, please come out and talk to us. Uh, our building, meeting hours are on the outside of the building. It tells you exactly when we're gonna be there having a meeting, you're welcome to come, find out what we do, and if you want to, please come and join. Uh, you need a D V two fourteen to be able to prove service-related experience. And the DFW, it's overseas, uh, service most of the time, and American Legion is not, so. Uh, but we, our, uh, groups are growing, we, uh, have over thirty-five people in, in the, uh, DFW Auxiliary. We have over thirty in the American Legion Auxiliary. Uh, I think there's close to three hundred in American Legion, of course, all those three hundred do not come, those are older veterans. And same way with the DFW. Our DFW is, really needs members, so if you know someone who's served overseas, please tell them to get in contact with us, we need members for that.
You know, one thing I want to say, Patty, I've noticed on Facebook especially, Dale and yourself, you're, you're, you're promoting individuals that are from St. Albans that are veterans and stuff like that. I think it's a great thing. Uh, and one thing that I do know is you gotta get younger people involved.
You do, and, and it's hard to do that because of the restrictions of membership.
Right.
So, that's why, I mean, we have people who come that are sixty, seventy, eighty years old, but they're not able to help with the functions, so their family members come and volunteer to help, which is very nice. We have a lady who was in the DFW Auxiliary who is not able to do a whole lot other than maybe come to the meeting. And so, she has a caretaker, and the caretaker and her family come and help us. They are probably the best volunteers we've ever had. And, um, this past year, we did a poppy display, we do one every year for Midwinter Conference in January. And last year, St. Albans DFW Auxiliary won first place in the state. And Dale and I, with the help of all the entities in the building, including the Veterans of Foreign War, or the VBA, uh, Rose made, got money for us, and we traveled to Phoenix to the National Conference. No one from our post, American Legion or DFW related, has ever been to the National Conference, and we were very honored to do that.
Well, you all are doing a wonderful job of promoting, and like you said, your membership's going up, keep up the good work.
It is, and come out and have some pancakes.
Yes.
And, and you see us doing anything else, please come and support us, because it is a great cause. And we donate monthly to the Veterans Home in Barbersville. And this year, our West Virginia State Department president, that is her special project, and she is from Hurricane. And, um, she is doing a wonderful job, and she is promoting, and the, the Veterans Home is really getting a good response out of having things volun, uh, donated, people coming in and doing things for the vets that are, uh, counted there. It's just, it's a great program, it really is.
Well, we thank you very much, Mary. Hey, what's your address real quick?
Eight twelve South Washington Street.
Thank you, pal.
So, and, and people know Dale, contact Dale, get on the Facebook, St. Albans, uh, Veterans Parade. Send him a message if you wanna come and talk to him about membership, he can, he's, he's in the American Legion and the DFW Auxiliary.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wanting to speak at public forum? Not in harm. Okay. All right, uh, with no other apparent public forum speakers, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say bye.